Good afternoon. Welcome to the Strategic Planning Committee meeting. I'm Carla Silvestre, member of the board. Let's start with some introductions to my left.
Good afternoon. I'm Shebra Evans, president on the board.
Good afternoon. I'm Nate Sinbys, student member of the board, and I did want to let the public know that I'll have to leave a bit early from today's meeting.
Lori Christina Webb with the board office.
Robyn Seibert, board staff.
Victoria Van Dyke, board staff.
Tracy Winfrey Edwards, literacy supervisor of elementary curriculum.
Berna Washington, supervisor for pre-kindergarten and Head Start.
Hi, Amy Crop, director of pre-K special programs and related services in the Office of Special Education.
Good afternoon. Henry Johnson, chief of staff.
Genetics and member of the board.
Great. Let's start with our informational summary. Do we have any edits to that? Okay, so with that, I'll pass it over to Dr. Johnson.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Silvestri. I think we've met on a number of occasions, and one of the things we want to do with the Strategic Planning Committee is to do a deeper dive into some of the work that takes place within MCPS. And one of the areas that a lot of folks are interested in right now, not only the community within the schools, but outside of the community at the local level and at the state, is what types of programs and what is the impact of those programs for students pre-kindergarten. So I've asked Ms. Washington, Ms. Winfrey Edwards, and Ms. Crop to join me this afternoon for a presentation which looks at the impact of our pre-kindergarten programs on the academic success of our students in kindergarten and beyond. And they will take you through that presentation, answer questions, and address any concerns or other information that you have. This is not only for those students that are regular students in our pre-K program, but also for our special education students as well. So with that, I'll turn the mic over to Ms. Washington, and she will begin the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you. We're very happy to be here to share what we know to be true about the lasting effects of early childhood education and how it impacts a child trajectory throughout the rest of their life. We already did our introductions. You can see our titles there. And we are going to take you on a visual tour with some data that was gathered for us by staff in the Office of Shared Accountability. We're very grateful to them for being able to do that for us, looking at the students who are currently sitting in our 4th grade classrooms in Montgomery County Public Schools who had access to our pre-K programs during the 2014-2015 school year. We're going to also, if we need to discuss a little bit more in depth about early literacy and what happens to children in terms of assessment and instruction between pre-kindergarten and grade 4, and then, of course, throughout, we're open to questions and discussion. So this slide shares just, these are the children who are currently enrolled in grade 4 who have remained in MCPS, and they are currently in our classrooms during this 2019-2020 school year. And these are our equity and accountability groups by number, and you can see that also
And this data shows the kindergarten students that participated in pre-K in the 2014-2015 school year, and it shows the text levels in which they were assessed on using the assessment program for primary reading. And at the time, in the first set of data, it shows text level 4, and then there's the text level 6, and the difference in those, the complexity of those texts increased greatly as we changed those text levels for our students. And we did that as a means of making sure that we leveled that pre-K entry point into reading to match as we move up in our other grades, first and second grade.
Can I ask a question about the previous slide? Is that all children that are in full day pre-K?
This was a mixture of full day and part day, and during the 20, in pre-K during the 2014-15 school year, the majority of our children were in part-day programs. At that time, there were 18 Head Start programs in Title I schools that were full day. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness. That were, could you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. There were 18 full-day Head Start programs during that school year in Title I schools. They were funded through Title I funds to be a full-day program, but this is a mixture.
And then can you just restate the difference between your two bars in the next slide?
Yes, and the difference of those two bars is the difference between the text levels. The text level 4 is in that first bar and the text level 6. And we changed the criteria at some point where we had students, the criteria for entering kindergarten, students at the end of kindergarten had to reach a text level 4, and then we made a change later to text level 6 as the benchmark for kindergarten. And so those levels show the difference, and the reason that the students actually were able to meet, to meet more in those lower text levels because the expectation of that lower text level was very simple, and the complexity of the text level was raised as we raised that level, the text level.
So I'm a pre-K student. I just finished a year. I take this assessment. We used to do it at level 4, and those were the results. Now it's a higher standard, and the results have improved. More children are...
Are doing, yes.
Better.
And that's because the pre-K, because of the pre-K education, students are having more opportunities in oral reading and different foundational skills so that they're more prepared and ready to meet that demand at that kindergarten level.
And that, I guess there's no control group?
I'm not sure. Huh? What did you say?
Because you did mention that by raising the text level expectation, you raised the expectations. How do you know that it was as a result of the pre-K, having gone through pre-K that caused the better performance?
I'm not sure that we know that exactly, but we do know that many of the skills that students need in kindergarten in order to meet that demand at 6 are those pre-readiness skills, that oral language, the foundational skills, exposure to phonemic awareness and phonics. That is a precursor to learning how to read in kindergarten. And when students have successfully secured those skills at any point in their education, they end up being able to break the code for reading. So we do know that as we've implemented more pre-K programs, that we have seen a greater trajectory in our students being able to perform better at those higher levels in kindergarten.
Do you have a question?
No, I didn't. I was just, I didn't have a question. I was just going to show the benefit to, I was just going to ask the question that there's a benefit to pre-K, but that's all.
So, oh, it's on. Good. I know I did what I'm doing. So what you see on the slides now is just an idea of our literacy assessment suite, K through 5, and what we are asking our children to do in our classrooms, K through 5. And if you see at the beginning, we start with kindergarten doing the KRA readiness, and that's a measure that helps them to demonstrate some of those skills early on so that we know, just some data, some information to help us guide how we can provide their instruction. This year, we have two new, well, this year, we have a new assessment, ORR, and it is an assessment that has been developed by Benchmark Advance, the current curriculum. And this particular assessment does, very much mirrors what M-Class used to do for us, and it takes a running record for our children, K through, we use it in K through 2. And that helps us to stay within those benchmarks, to progress monitor in a way, to find out where our students are growing for each quarter, and if they're sticking to those trajectories that we've established in the system. The other, the next test, it's new as of last year, so this is our second year using MAP Reading Fluency, and it is an adaptive test, that assessment that measures oral reading fluency as well as comprehension and foundational skills. It is additionally going to be used as our screener for dyslexia and intervention. And so it shows us very early with those foundational skills where our children have gaps. We've made it a requirement in grades K and 1 that they are assessed at least three times a year on the foundational skills component of that, because that's, again, where we mentioned in that earlier slide, when children secure the skills and foundational skills, then we can help them to break that code so that they're reading better and earlier. So this assessment tool helps us to really target where the zone of proximal development is for students with that, with their foundational skills, and where we can target instruction inside the classroom, along with some foundational skills, explicit instruction in those K-CAP classrooms, then we can give that extra support as well as an overall support. We also still continue to use MAP R to measure our growth in reading in grades 3 through 5. It also has a component with second grade that we are also piloting this year with our second graders so that we can see if children who do very well in MAP Reading Fluency, they have the option in the spring to take MAP Growth in second grade. And then we also have our district literacy assessments, which measure how students are proficient on standards. So not only are we looking at the comprehension and their reading skills, but we're looking and matching those to the standards, the curriculum standards. And the newest, newer assessment with our new product, the Benchmark Interim Assessment, those assessments are also very much matched to standard, and students are assessed on those, it's required, three times a year.
So in this slide, we are showing the performance of this same cohort of students when they were enrolled in grade 3 on the PARC and the MCAP on the English Language Arts Assessment. So you're seeing the students that met the benchmark for level 3 or higher and did not meet the benchmark for level 3 or higher. Or level 4, I'm sorry.
You said the total number is about 1,000?
The total number of current students sitting in...
Well, your cohort, this cohort.
Yes, this cohort has 2,234.
Say it again, 2,234?
2,234 students.
Okay.
Slide on page 4.
And now this is this same cohort's students' performance this year on the fall MAP R for students who scored at the 50th percentile or higher. Again, we're looking at those who did not meet the benchmark and those who did currently
So one of the things that we, well, we've done a few things to ensure that our students are able to read at third grade, and one of the biggest things is that to really adhere to the shifts that have happened in literacy instruction based on the Common Core. And our new curriculum has helped to enable that, as well as we've put in some, we've put in plays in our Curriculum 2.0, opportunities for our students to actually address complexity and evidence of knowledge based on the shifts that have happened in ELA with the Common Core. So we've prepared different types of experiences for our students to engage in this work now so that when they are in, when all of our schools are in benchmark, they'll be able to have this as a consistent piece. But our students that are in benchmark, this is some of the parts that they're, that they're engaging with now to make sure that we are getting all of our students to grade level by the end of their grade level, but particularly by grade 3.
Now, this is one of my favorite slides because it gives us an opportunity to compare the, just the sheer numbers of children who were actually enrolled in pre-K during the 14-15 school year compared to those who were not, for those current 4th graders. So that you can see that for, in all of 4th grade, again, we, there's the number 2,234 students who experienced pre-K in MCPS, and then you can see the demographics. We also included special education and ESOL in there, and those are the children who are currently identified as students with disabilities or who are currently ESOL students. That is not necessarily connected to that identification that they had that in pre-K. That's what's happening right now. And then you can see the non-participants for those same demographics. You can also see that nearly half of our Latino students, or little over half of our Latino students access pre-kindergarten, who are currently in grade 4. And similarly, there are quite a few students who are farm students who accessed pre-K, who are currently in grade 4. And this gives you a look at, again, at our equity and accountability groups, current grade 4 students who accessed pre-kindergarten during the 14-15 school year as well. And you can see, again, those percentages are a little bit, or higher for our farm students who are currently in grade 4. This is another wonderful slide that we love the most because it shows, or appears to show, that the students who accessed pre-K, especially our students impacted by farms, our students who are Hispanic, Latino, or farms, Black, African-American, there appears that those students are performing a little bit higher. There's a statistical significance on their performance in literacy. So APPR, PARC, and MAP R. And what they did was they shaded those numbers in blue where there was a statistical significance.
Could you just explain, or just help me understand the table? So kindergarten level 4, 87.5. How does it progress? What are we looking at here?
So for the current 4th graders who had access to pre-K compared to those who did not, 87.5 of those students scored, they were reading at a level 4 at the end of K compared to 74% of those students who did not have access to pre-K. Then as we move through that same group of students, there were 57.2% of those students who were reading at a level 6 at the end of K who had access to pre-K compared to only 43.8, about 44%, who did not have access to pre-K. So for each one of those assessments, as they progress through the grades, there appears to be a little bit of a bump for those students who had access to our early childhood programs. So in this next slide, we just want to give you some background on what we do to prepare our pre-kindergarten students as they learn to be literate citizens. So in the 14-15 school year, we did adopt the Big Day for Pre-K curriculum, which is a product of Scholastic. It is implemented in general education, pre-K, special ed, and in the high school child development programs. One of the reasons that this product was selected is because it did have strong oral language and literacy components to support students who are English language learners. That was one of, because the majority of the students enrolled in our early childhood programs are English language learners, about 70 to 80%, there was a search for a product that would support that. And because it has a lot of rich literacy resources, it has a thematic approach, and it teaches teachers to, it trains teachers on the dialogic reading approach where it's the same reading that you would do to your own child or grandchild, where you're looking at the picture book, you're asking questions about the picture, you're talking about, what do you think is going to happen next? That's the kind of reading that teachers are trained to do when they're implementing the Big Day for Pre-K curriculum, and we think that that has had a real impact on the students. And then for our next steps in FY '21, we'll be implementing Eureka Math so that we can be aligned with K-5. And then in the following year, FY '22, we will be shifting from Big Day for Pre-K to the benchmark.
Okay. And what year? The two years?
FY '22, yes. We have also have a strong commitment to professional development for our early childhood teachers. We schedule, we are required by the Head Start grant to provide 18 hours of professional development, and we generally schedule three professional development sessions per year. We have been very fortunate to be able to collaborate with our colleagues in the Elementary Integrated Curriculum Team, and they have been instrumental in helping us to provide rich resources for our teachers, including Words Their Way for Pre-K through K as a professional source, no more teaching a letter a week. And then one of the biggest impacts has been on the interactive writing across grades to help with, that kind of goes along with dialogic reading, but it's with writing, where children, you share the pen with the children. It's been just a wonderful experience for the teachers and for the children. In addition, we view the teacher and the paraeducator as a teaching team. So you all may be aware that when we host our professional development during the school year, school is canceled for the children so that the teaching team can attend the PD together. And it's, it really supports planning, and everyone knows what the expectation is for delivery of instruction. We have also made a commitment to inform school administrators and school leaders about early childhood and pre-kindergarten, and for the past three years, we've been hosting voluntary sessions for administrators to come and learn all about curriculum, the day, the rationale for some of the practices that are in place in early childhood.
Thank you. So I'll switch now to the special education component of this as we really work much more closely in hand. Our two offices are tied at the hip in all of our learning, professional development, curriculum changes, really because this is, these are our outcomes, increasing access to high-quality early childhood experiences for all children, expanding half-day to full-day opportunities, and being very intentional and planful about including students with disabilities in with general education, in with general education peers in pre-K classes when that is the appropriate least restrictive environment. In the past two years, we have kind of moved this up at a very quick pace. We've used local dollars, county dollars, to sort of push along our initiatives. We've developed innovative programs for all young children with disabilities who are living in poverty, so you have that double, kind of you have that risk, and we need these students to get to exactly where their non-disabled peers are too, aligned with really just this overall vision. So MCPS funded the McDonald Knowles Early Childhood Center last year. County Council funded the Up County equivalent, the Up County Child Development Center, Early Childhood Center at Emory Grove, which also has that DHHS partnership of co-locating the Family Involvement Center right there down the hall, which is where children and families, caregivers, whomever can come to kind of like a drop-in preschool-like experience, classroom-like experience. That's the option for many families. They don't, you know, choose to or are able to enroll their children, or they're too young to enter pre-K yet, but they choose to access this resource. A lot of the children who come, and it's over about 200, you know, the rate, the word is getting out, and I think one month ago, or two months ago, there were 70 children seen, children and families, and last month it went up to 225. So the word is absolutely getting out. I was up at, I was waiting in the office about a week ago, and it was just a constant stream of families coming in to go to the Family Involvement Center, and that is a real partnership, an intentional partnership with DHHS there. A lot of the children seen at, who come to the early, come to the Family Involvement Center are enrolled in the Infants and Toddlers Program. So they're coming as birth-to-three or birth-to-four-year-olds with their caregivers and their providers, their early intervention providers, speech therapists, special educators, physical therapists from the Infants and Toddlers Program are coming with them to do their services in a natural experience, and then their siblings come too.
Right. So it looks really clear that what we need is all-day pre-K for all the students, not only in Montgomery County, but probably in our state as well. So just in terms of, and you know, the data is clear in terms of met and not met, any information or data on the attendance, been able to look at whether those who haven't met, you know, you know...
Attendance in pre-K?
Right.
Chronic absenteeism versus...
Yeah, right. What do you have with that, anything?
We do, in fact, I was, we were just looking together at the data, the absentee, absence rate at the, for the children enrolled in the Up County Early Childhood Center. I don't have it with me. I can get it, but I believe we just had a discussion about it. We don't have, I don't believe we would have the data tracking back to the current 4th graders.
Right, right.
But we do track it. I just don't have, I can get it.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know whether, you know, there are also students who come every day and how they performed as opposed to, you know, those that, you know, didn't come for various reasons, you know.
Anecdotally, our students with disabilities have very good attendance.
Attendance, great, good.
But I, we do have, we track that data. In fact, we were just looking at it. We can get it.
I wanted to ask you, what, what happens at the Family Involvement Center? You said they bring their occupational therapists, but what, if you walk in there, what do you see?
Well, there's one in Rockville, and then the one at the Family Involvement Center up at Emory Grove. So there is a teacher, one and a half, two adults who are teachers, and they're trained in, we in fact have provided, through Infants and Toddlers, provided some of the training in the social-emotional foundations of early learning. So the classes, classrooms look very much like high-quality early childhood classes. They also happen to look a lot like our MCPS pre-K classes because we share all those ideas, and we do some professional development together, particularly through Infants and Toddlers. And so the students, there's a, it's, there's a sign-in. Families have to register either through themselves or through their infants and toddlers provider. All children are accompanied by an adult and siblings, as many siblings or, you know, other peers that want to come with them. They do a couple throughout the day because it's drop-in, so it's not like show up at 9:00 and leave at 12:00. Families can come in and out all the time, but throughout the day, they're, they do two kind of like circle, circle experiences. So families often will come for one and then leave before the next one comes. So they're two sort of similar, depending if you're a morning person or an afternoon person. Families can kind of come and go. It's a lot of, you know, really, if you walked in, it would look just like an MCPS pre-K classroom, kitchen area, play areas, all that, lots of literacy. And then oftentimes, a physical therapist or speech therapist is coming to provide services, particularly as the child gets older. Really, it's, you know, some providers would say, I really want to work on your physical therapy, you know, I'm your child's physical therapist. Let's go in an environment that looks, that is a preschool experience, you know, where you're walking over, you know, different than your home experience. Speech, the speech therapist might say, let's meet at the Family Involvement Center on Wednesdays from now on because there are other children there, and I'll bring, I'll be able to bring the other children into the, to the therapy conversations. But it looks like, you know, there are the toys.
But the families are interacting with the children using the resources.
Right. It is very much parent participation.
I go sit in the corner and check my phone.
There is no corner to be, to sit in. It is very much, and especially the Infants and Toddlers Program is a family, is an adult coaching model, parent or caregiver coaching model. So there is no, let me take this child away and you, and work over here, because really what the Infants and Toddlers speech therapist, for example, is doing is talking to the parent how, about how to work with their child for the other hours of the day and week that they're not there. So it really is, if you walked in, you would not see children and adults. You would see, the children are sitting right with their adults. the children are sitting right with their adults.
Okay.
And this is another one of our initiatives, in addition to the, you know, we can't expand our early childhood centers quickly enough, so what we do is use our already existing facilities. And we have realigned some special education dollars, special education pre-K dollars, and used additional funds. And we have served five, this, this current year, we have inclusive pre-K services, classes in these schools. Last year, we were at Joanne Lellic at Broad Acres Elementary, so here's our expansion from that. I'll show you the data in a minute. But for these students who are income-eligible, and therefore qualified for pre-K, and live in these neighborhoods, rather than going to another school to attend a PEP class, they're enrolling in their, in their homeschool. And then MCPS, we have a, at each of these schools, we have a half-time special education teacher, and a full-time, or a special education paraeducator, in addition, this is all in addition on top of the general education staffing. Speech, part-time speech language pathologist, occupational therapist, physical therapist as needed to meet the IP team recommendations, parent educator, and then the, all the families have, all the children have access to a psychologist, social worker, and family services worker. That parent educator piece is really looking at, these are young children who are going to be in the system, probably navigating that special education world for years and years to come. So how do we, at age four, give you that personal kind of hand, hand-holding, so to speak, through the special education universe? And help you navigate that system and understand, because then, you know, those are non-monetary benefits, non, you know, non-data-driven benefits, but the families need that early on and really benefit from that.
Are these programs fully enrolled?
I believe so. The, yeah, the, it's about five students in each class.
Oh, okay.
And then five students with disabilities in each class, 15 students with, in general education. But they are going, you know, they're attending with their neighbors, and in the, in the school where they'll be going to kindergarten. Again, here's a breakdown of our two early childhood centers, Silver Spring and Gaithersburg. They both have that full-day inclusion model. McDonald Knowles a little bigger with an additional, a special education classroom for three-year-olds, and, and an additional class of four-year-olds. McDonald Knowles, by virtue of where it is, partnered with the co-located childcare center, the ARC, where we also serve students whose parents place them there as their childcare, with additional staffing beyond the McDonald Knowles staffing. That's for parents who's, who's, who place their students there as their childcare. And then the Up County with four classrooms, and the Family Involvement Center, in that partnership with the County Council, with DHHS.
I'm just curious, how do parents find out about these programs? I'm looking here, you know, at the Up County Center, and, you know, with the Family Involvement Center, 25 children, birth through, you know, I guess, five. How, how would they find out about that?
About the Family Involvement Center, particularly through DHHS? DHHS, in combination with the Infants and Toddlers Program, which DHHS is the lead agency, the staff, our infants and toddlers staff, MCPS staff, largely, many of them hear about it from their infants and toddlers provider. You know, I'm the speech pathologist who's been working in your home with your child for a year, let's go meet at this thing called Family Involvement Center. And then, you know, they hear about it that way. There's also pretty intense outreach through the Early Childhood Center families, you know, through backpacks and parent educators and that kind of stuff. And then just a lot of outreach, it's online through the County Council, through the DHHS website. I think largely, you know, infants and toddlers are kind of spurring that initial, and then it's going to be more word and word of mouth. But initially, it's largely infants and toddlers providers making that connection and registering.
So infants and toddlers, how do, how do people with infants find out?
How do they find the Infants and Toddlers Program?
Yeah.
Or the Infants and Toddlers Program separate from?
Right.
All this? So Infants and Toddlers serves children, birth to three and in some cases, four, who have documented 25% or more developmental delays in any one area. They are referred by pediatricians.
Okay, there you go.
Which is what we hope.
Okay, all right.
And we have put a lot of effort, both fiscal effort through grants and things, and also just the, kind of, to expand outreach to pediatricians. We also, I serve on a couple committees, as does Verna, at the county level, where we have a pediatrician on our, on our committee, and she is committed to this as well. She sees, you know, she has seen a historical gap as of, as have we. You know, there is American Pediatric Association, one of the pediatric associations, requires screening at, I believe, 18 months, but that can look very different. It can look like a 15-minute part of your 18-month-old well-child appointment and going through questions, or it can look like it did with, quite honestly, my children, where there was, you know, I signed the HIPAA form, and I signed this thing that had me circulate areas of problem of my, that was my experience, and everything in between. So DHHS helps us do outreach. We've used some grant money around, a few years ago, around actually, the Emory Grove site, to make personal visits to pediatric, big pediatric offices in Shady Grove with materials about what Infants and Toddlers is. Pediatric outreach, I would say, is our sort of biggest, newest push.
Right, right. I, I wonder what, you know, just thinking back to my own children, I can't remember how we just went to the pediatrician, a friend, you know, recommended Dr. Worthen, and what happens if, you know, you don't take your child to a pediatrician? I mean, you don't know to do that. I would imagine that happens, don't you think?
Yeah.
There's, there's no one to compel you to do it.
Well, families enroll, there are some touchpoints at, at which you're sort of required to have access to medical, and largely, I mean, those are around immunizations.
Yeah.
So there are sort of mandatory touchpoint, required touchpoints along the way. That doesn't mean, you know, like, many of us take our children to the doctor once a year, every six months when they're younger, that doesn't mean that. But there are sort of built-in inherent touchpoints that would be required. Are there families who, you know, for example, enrollment in any kind of childcare, you're going to need to get your doctor's form signed.
Yeah.
Even family childcare centers are going to require those forms, which have to be signed by a doctor, you have to document the immunization. So what, it might look different to different families, but there are points along a child's trajectory at which they're kind of going to be, that's kind of going to be caught, so to speak.
Yeah.
And it might be, you know, a different doctor all the time versus some of us who have consistent pediatricians for years. That's different. A lot of the, I'll go back to, in addition to pediatricians, preschools and childcares often send, you know, make referrals, ask the parents to make the referral to Infants and Toddlers Program. So families will call and say, my, my child's childcare provider said she can't understand a thing she says, or my, my child's, you know, the preschool my child attends says, everybody else is talking more.
Mm-hmm.
Does that answer that?
Interesting, yeah.
And I do have some data, so in addition to, in pre-K, all four-year-olds take the MCPS AP, MCPS Assessment Program in reading and math, fall and spring. And of their pre-K year for the four-year-olds. So that is a measure that all students, all four-year-olds enrolled in pre-K and MCPS in special education programs, or any of our classes, and in general education take. The, we have the data, the baseline data for this year's current students sitting in, attending the early childhood, childcare center, early childhood centers. Students, so we have the fall data, and we'll have to, you know, we'll then look again at the spring data. 76% are approaching or proficient, approaching benchmark or proficient in the early childhood These are students with disabilities. 76% approaching or proficient students, you spoke to the word, control group, 68% of peers not enrolled in these inclusive pre-Ks by virtue of where they live are approaching or proficient, approaching benchmark or proficient. So we'll look at, you know, the more important pieces can be what they look like at the end of the year, if they're walking into kindergarten. So, but this is the baseline data. So really, the data is, the data that we'll continually be monitoring is, is what's going to tell us, give us information. But what we know is that students with disabilities are making progress in these inclusive settings. We've got to continue to expand, we've got to use the dollars, whether they're coming from Kerwin, or local, or county, whatever sources they're coming, because while we expand number of seats for students with disabilities in our inclusive pre-K classes and the centers, the enrollment growth for students, pre-K students with disabilities far outpaces our growth here. So pre-K students with disabilities, the enrollment, it's one of the fastest-growing populations of students with disabilities. So while we develop all these, you know, I want to be clear that while we're adding all these great numbers and highlighting it, the growth of students with disabilities far outpaces our ability to keep up with inclusive pre-K classes and inclusive pre-K seats. So that's the money that we're, it's going to take more additional funds every year.
What do you attribute the growth to?
I think, I think inclusion. You know, inclusion is an evidence-based process, practice, inclusion of typical, you know, learning oral, you know, learning my oral language skills and talking to students with, who have typical language development. It's full day, not all of our programs are full day. Self-contained special education programs are full day. I, I would attribute lots of it to, to inclusion, inclusive practice.
But why do you see more special education pre-K students?
Um, it's hard to say. The birth rate, to some degree, better early identification, the pediatric outreach, you know, I wouldn't make a direct link to that, but outreach, the rise, there's certainly a statistical rise in children with autism. We're seeing a lot of children with autism at younger and younger age, whether that's outreach or change in diagnostic assessments. Thank you. And I also, you know, the other, if I were here talking about autism services, I would also be talking about the significant growth across the board. For, you know, students older than pre-K, I'd be talking about the significant enrollment growth there, far outpacing enrollment of other students with disabilities and general education students.
Autism.
Autism.
Do you think they're giving out information as, you know, like when you leave the hospital, they give you diapers and formula? Do you think they're putting information in for parents?
On developmental guidelines, developmental approaches?
Yeah, I wonder.
You walk out of the hospital, a big bag of stuff, you're going to focus on the diapers.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's really going to be the personal handoff, the personal touchpoint, in my opinion.
Interesting.
And so our final slide is just to demonstrate the funding and the staffing that is required to really provide these high-quality programs for early childhood education. So for this year, it was a little over $20 million, and 236 staff for pre-kindergarten and Head Start programs. Special education, as Amy just said, it's one of our largest programs for early childhood at just about $27 million with 260 staff, and then, that's Infants and Toddlers, excuse me. And then special education, preschool ed and child find at nearly $28 million, and you can see the staff required.
All right. Well, clearly, this is an investment we really have to make, yeah.
And where does this money come from?
Some from us.
So I can speak, I can speak to the pre-kindergarten and Head Start program. So the Head Start grant from the federal government goes directly to Department of Health and Human Services, and then it is a pass-through grant to Montgomery County Public Schools. And we match that grant, and then there is a, a contribution from Title I for those full-day classes. And then the pre-kindergarten programs are locally funded, and there are 160 slots of the locally-funded pre-K that are funded through the pre-kindergarten expansion grant that this year was $1.58 million for those eight classes serving of 160 students. And those are the programs that serve families that are at 186 to 300% of federal poverty. They're slightly higher incomes, but it's still very challenging to find affordable pre-K.
That's a federal grant, or?
That, that initially was a federal grant, and now it is all-state.
Okay. And I'll do the next two rows there. Infants and Toddlers is, this is the MCPS local dollars, and the 260 are MCPS full-time equivalent, MCPS staff members. DHHS in the county is the lead agency. They, this does not include their dollars, it's significantly less, and I'm going to, it's a few million dollars that they fund the program with, and additional staff, and that is social workers, nurses, and some other, some other staff. But the 260 full-time staff are, those 260 are teachers, speech therapists, physical therapists, and occupational therapists, and some paraeducators. And the next, the special education preschool and child find is local dollars.
That's MCPS operating budget.
MCPS operating budget.
My colleagues have any questions?
No, I, I think it's pretty clear.
So I did, I did want to ask with, with your performance slides, like gray, slide seven and eight, like what do you do with, I mean, of course, we'd like all the kids to be performing at the highest levels. What do you do with this information? How do you change your practices so that we're moving the needle more towards the level four and more students meeting that?
Yeah. I do think that we're making a lot of concerted efforts, as I mentioned earlier, with that math reading fluency assessment. I think that has given us a lot of leverage in terms of identifying where our students' needs are very early, and being able to provide explicit instruction in those areas. And with our new curriculum, as well as some enhancements that we've made to the curriculum 2.0, we've really had a very specific focus on providing foundational skills, not only in K-2, but really adhering to those foundational skills, needs within our three-through-five classrooms as well, and making sure that we're very explicit in that instruction and targeting where those students' needs are. Along with, one of the things that we've made great changes with is, not only do we give this small-group instruction and provide a lot of guided reading and different types of interventions around a student's small-group reading strategies, but we've also kind of higher, made that bar a little higher by adding in, like the Common Core Standard 10, where we want children to be exposed to high-level, complex text, and we're making sure that that happens across the board from kindergarten through fifth grade. And so that exposure with read-alouds in K through two, and exposure to higher-level text, and more language, and more explicit pictures and vocabulary during those times, that gives opportunities for students to collaborate a little bit more and speak to one another and discuss the text. And that's also increasing their ability to perform at a higher level, because what I can read and understand and talk about is what I usually can go back and perform on an assessment and do well with. And we've seen that, as a matter of fact, I would even think that this year with our new curriculum, one of the things that has been very pleasing for us is that some of those things that we've put in place with that new curriculum, that complex text from kindergarten through fifth grade, the data from the beginning of the year interim assessments and the data now has increased, and it shows that, that building of knowledge, and it shows that understanding of text and reading, and what children need to do within a reading standard to make that, that benchmark. So I think that in terms of how are we really looking at changing our instructional practices and how we're adhering to providing children with the specific things that they need to move forward, we're doing a better job of providing that and providing those instructional pathways with our teachers.
And then the, in your chart with the statistically significant gains, number, slide 12, what do you think is happening with our African-American students in grade threes and fours? There's, there's not a statistically significant difference between the kids that did pre-K and those that did not. and those that did not? Just give me a moment to look at it. So can you ask your question again?
Um, we see some statistically significant improvements in the performance of Hispanic students that have gone through pre-K throughout kindergarten to grade four. But in the African-American chart, we don't see statistically significant gains in grades three and four. And I just wondered if you had any thoughts about what's going on there or what we can do about that?
I, I do think that we have, I think that what we can do about it is to increase cultural proficiency across the board in our system, making sure that we are addressing, like cultural, culturally sensitive teaching. I think it also has to do with, in terms of bringing in resources and tax that are more representative of our population of students and using some of that information to help to gain, to leverage your, your background and your culture in our curriculum so that you are more, that you think that it's for you, that you're tied in and you think that this really is for me. And so you have a greater level of investment in learning when you think that something is geared toward you. And so I think that some of the work that we're doing within our equity unit as well as some of the conversations that we're having with our reading specialists about what to take back to their schools, like being very culturally responsive in your teaching, looking at, looking at this data and deciding how, what does this child need and what can you do in terms of building relationships and bringing in more resources that represent the population of students that you serve. I think those are some things that we can do better. In terms of like why the dip is there, I, I think it definitely mirrors nationally the dip. And I think it's a situation and a problem that we're continuing to like try to figure out why, why it exists. I'm not sure that I know the answer to it, but I, I do recognize that across the board, that it happens. And we just have to keep making those efforts to make sure that our, our students are getting what they need from, from their experience at school.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
I don't know, I think, you know, there have been significant improvements from kindergarten through second grade. It's really the third and fourth grade where, you know, the percentages are very close, fifty-three point eight for the pre-K, fifty-three point four for no pre-K. And then grade four, fifty-one point nine, forty-eight, you know, point eight compared to that. I think in those grades, students start getting grades. Actually, I was at an elementary school today and, you know, one of the things the principal was saying is that, you know, in third grade and fourth grade, they're more aware of grades and things like that as well. But I think, you know, it's just really important to continue to encourage students to read, read and read some more. And, you know, to have those opportunities, whether it's go to the media center or the public library to take out books, certainly for parents to continue to read to children and read with them. You know, I, I think that's really, really important. And I think, you know, a lot of, some of these books that are repetitive, you know, I just think about my own daughter who is very old, no, she's not old, she tells me she's old, but she's forty-one now. And, you know, she could hardly walk. And she was dragging a Mother Goose book for us to read to her, you know, when she was very, very young. And it's just always read and written, you know. And so I think those are really, really important skills and values that we want to have our, our kids kind of ingest. And certainly, I think anything that teachers can do, you know, principals can do, anyone who works with children can do, you know, that that's very important. And giving kids their own books, I think, is a really important piece. They're delighted when they get their own books. And so I, I think that, you know, we all as adults need to be on this reading page and encouraging kids. So, yeah. But, yeah, you can see the difference, you know, in kids who had the pre-K and no pre-K, at least through the second grade, very clearly on that. And.
Okay. I can move on.
So they have this data, what does this data represent? Do you want to speak to it? What does it represent?
It was earlier slides.
Okay.
As previous, previous iterations.
So Ms. Sylvester, the, that really concludes the presentation. The other information was just anecdotal data.
Okay.
That we had there for you to look at. That was a part of the presentation. And one of the things that I wanted, I asked the team to do was to cut the presentation down so there would be more time for discussion and more time for conversation. So this is information that you can take with you if you have particular questions, or if you look through it, if you have particular questions, we can address it. But we didn't want to spend all of our time talking about these data points because we wanted you to be able to address any questions that you had. All of this data is based upon the cohort, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen students and their performance in the various grades is what these data points are. And then some of them, of course, are by our focus groups, looking at Park and looking at APPR and some of the others by focus groups as well.
Well, with the early literacy research, you know, we know that children who enter school with more vocabulary do better in school as well. And I think it's just really important, once again, you know, from a very, very early age, you know, that you talk to your child, read to your child, you know, supposed to, well, you can do some Sesame Street, I guess. And, you know, sometimes they rerun Mr. Rogers. But, you know, I just think it's, it's just better to talk all the time to your child. And that's how they learn. They're like little sponges when they're young and, you know. So, yeah, it'd be great to go back and have that time again, right? Yeah.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It was very helpful. And it always helps our case to show why early learning is important, right? Been able to, when we did the grand opening for the McDonald's and then the Emery Grove, the Early Education Center, was really happy to be able to go to the classrooms and see the progress that our students were making in a very short period of time. So definitely puts our children at an advantage to have that early access, right? So thank you for the work that we've been doing and the work that we'll continue to do.
Thanks.
And I believe I had asked for the state data for kindergarten readiness?
Yes. So there are a couple of issues with the kindergarten readiness assessment. I think we've, the, the team has brought that to your attention before. It's a sampling of kindergarten students. It's not all kindergarten students. And so I did not want them to include that in this data because we, we don't test every single child, unfortunately, or however you want to look at it, we don't test every single child. The data that, around the students that we did test for this year, is that, do we have that data, Ms.? Okay. So we can provide you with that data, but since we only do a sampling of students, it only tells us how that sample of students performed and would not be indicative of an aggregate number of about twelve thousand students. Ms. Washington, do you know how many students we were sampled?
Chief teacher. There were approximately three students per class, around twelve hundred. And of that number, when we want to see how our pre-K and Head Start students perform, we have to work with the Office of the Chief Technology Officer to pull those students from that sample.
And that's the same with special education. It's not, it's not a certain percentage of students with special education with an IP and certain percentage of students in various groups. It's just the state gives ID numbers.
But we can certainly provide you with the performance data for those students who were sampled. We can do that.
So what is that, why is that assessment given by the, why is the state collecting this information if, how is it useful?
Okay. So I can speak to that because the kindergarten readiness assessment was a part of the work that I did when I was at the Maryland State Department of Education. And we did give districts the option of doing a full assessment for all of the kindergartners. For example, Baltimore City does do a full assessment. And we gave, there was a lot of pushback from teachers across the state that this was very, the assessment was very time-consuming for teachers in that it was, it was difficult for some of the students. So we at the state decided that we would give this, the districts the option of going to a sampling or going to a full administration of the assessment. At the time, Montgomery County chose to do the sampling because being such a large district, it would be really cost prohibitive to, those, those districts that did the full administration brought teachers in during the summer to begin the work. And so they brought them in like the, the two weeks prior to the opening of school so they would have the opportunity to test all of their students in kindergarten. Those districts who couldn't afford to do that, and that was some of the smaller districts that would do that, they went to the sampling. So you have those who, the more smaller districts went to the full administration. And some of those districts that went to the full administration also had more dollars in order to be able to do it. Head Start dollars, Title I dollars, they had more funding that they could do the full assessment. And those districts who did not have as much funding in the area of Title I and Head Start mostly decided to go to the sampling. And the state gave them the option of doing that, but, so when you look at, when the state comes out with its data and it says that fifty-four percent of the students are performing, are ready for kindergarten, we have to keep in mind that that doesn't include all of the kindergarten students in the state of Maryland. It only includes those districts that chose and were able to fund a full administration versus those districts who went to a sampling. So that's why there, there are going to be those who say, well, what's the purpose or what's the importance of it when you really can't give us a true picture of how many students are ready for kindergarten and how many students are not? Does that address your question?
Yeah. I guess is this useful, is this something that we should try to do? Is this, is this useful information for teachers as they begin kindergarten?
And I guess that would be, because you probably know more about the test than I do, Ms. Washington.
So we have worked with MSD on professional development. We actually last year brought in kindergarten teachers to meet with the pre-K teachers and that very thing was discussed. How did they, you then use the information gleaned from the kindergarten readiness assessment to guide instruction, to inform practice? And a lot of the teachers felt that APPR and the actual assessments that are used in kindergarten provided them with more accurate information.
Okay.
About, I mean, readiness is one thing. We often say, are the children ready for school? Are we ready for the children? Is the question. So the teachers preferred the assessments that were administered to their entire class in kindergarten, that were district-wide. They could also get a picture of all the kindergarten students and compare their students to students throughout the county. Whereas with the KRA data, again, as Dr. Johnson said, it's a sample.
Yeah. I would think that obviously it would be an advantage for the teacher to know more, as much about their students as possible. I wanted to just thank you for your forbearance. And I know we were an hour late, but, you know, we're engaged, I think, in some very important work. And so thank you for that. I know you're an hour behind now. So, but thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it.
And just wanted to remind, or the millions watching.
Yeah.
That.
Definitely.
The reason why we're talking about this issue is because this is one of the segments of our strategic plan. And, you know, we wanted to know how much money we're investing in this, how well it's working. I don't remember what our metric is for pre-K. It was, I think it was just growth in seats. Was there a?
Well, it's also, it's also performance too. It's not only the increase in seats, but it's also the performance. And we always use as a metric ninety percent, moving towards ninety percent level of performance. It's how long you, how you will get there and how long it will take you to get there is, is what we, and as you can see from the data that was just presented to you, we're somewhere probably in the seventy percent if we would include all of our students.
Okay.
But what we presented today was the pre-K students that were in a cohort group and how they performed based upon the pre-K program that MCPS has provided them. And you can see there, there, the, there is an important component to the children's education if they're provided pre-K services versus those who do not.
You see an improvement.
Yeah, you do see a marked improvement, particularly far as students are underserved students, our students in poverty, our students of color. The program benefits those students very well in comparison.
Yeah. And I think it's an important point to make as we, as a county look to expand pre-K is that we are already, we, we have evidence to show that this is not just what we all believe.
Right.
There is evidence to show that it's, it's working. So thank you very much for your work.
Great.
Thank you.
You're adjourned.
Okay, thank you.